Call to order, the December 14th, 2017 Business Meeting. And Mr. Krupp could take the role?
Yes, well, good morning Commissioners. We are joined this morning with Mr. Chris Story representing County Council. And then Mr. Kevin Moss serving as your Clerk to the Board. So I'll start with the role with Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Savas.
Here.
And I should make mention that Chair Bernard is excused from today's meeting. He's out of town this week, so unable to attend the meeting.
Yeah, and who excused him? Did you excuse him?
Well, excuse me.
I'm just teasing.
There's no excuse for that. You all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to the next agenda item. Mr. Krupp, if you wanted to do that, please.
Oh, we have Citizen Communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's we do. How could I forget? Mr. Les Poole, could you come on up? I have one blue card here today. It's not completely filled out, but I'll accept it anyhow.
I'm going to give you a pass on that, Chair Savas. Good morning Commissioners. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone. Just a couple of quick thoughts. One is, there's an article in the Tribune about I-205. It's probably been brought to your attention. And it talks about how the traffic out in Stafford, between Stafford and the Oregon City Bridge, is diverting onto the side roads, as we all know. And you end up, you've got a huge traffic jam going through the Willamette District, where everyone tries to ferry back onto the freeway. I can only imagine how nice that's going to be if our good friends at Metro and ODOT decide we're going to toll that freeway. Deep concerns, there is a lot of unrest about there, out there about that issue. And at the last meeting, kind of stunned to hear Chair Bernard mention that Metro was promoting the idea of tolling, but not expanding the freeway. I know Metro fairly well, and I say they're bluffing. And I think it's a ploy. Because then when they agree to put the lanes in and toll the freeway, then they're the good guy. The real problem we have is that too much money is going elsewhere. With a $5 billion transportation budget, there is no excuse for what's gone on. And I defy anyone, anyone, to go down there at 5:00 tonight, or tomorrow, any day of the week, and sit on the Stafford overpass with your camera and clock some speeds and count the number of trucks that are sitting there, polluting the air, raising the cost of our food. It is absurd what's gone on in Oregon. Absolutely unacceptable. And I've been an advocate for roads because they are our most important, most reliable, most significant transportation system of all. We have an aging population. Not everyone's going to be walking in the East Wind, or riding light rail, or on a bike. I do all of those except light rail. But we've got misplaced priorities, and it's time it changed. And it needs to come from the Board. It needs to come from the Board. You're our representatives. You know I'm not somebody getting up here and speaking just because I'm caught in traffic. Be surprised how many people I know from being in the material handling world. I talk to a lot of folks, a lot of businesses, so the message I'm bringing you is very strong. I'm sorry if I seem repetitive, but we're heading into another year with this grayness in front of us. And the traffic is growing every day. So I don't expect you all to perform miracles here, but please, do everything you can to bring reason to this, even if it means you're occasionally going to have to vote against something that's politically uncomfortable. And I would hope, I would hope that we would have an answer on what we're going to see as far as a possible vehicle registration fee, how that might work, where the money from the state is going to go. These are questions that are just so significant that I will be back next week seeking answers. Thank you for your time, as always.
Yep, thanks Les. I do want to say that this Board, I think, is in a, has a similar position, and I see that Mr. Humberson has his light on, but I do want to say that I think the Board's pretty unified in our position. But last my advice is maybe you speak to the Washington County Board of Commissioners, and the Willamette County Board of Commissioners, then the City of Portland Council, and also Metro, and make that same pitch. I think, for the most part, you're talking to the choir up here on this one, about a lot of your passions, because we share that, and we have signaled that as well. Commissioner Humberson?
Yes, I wasn't sure if Mr. Poole had seen our meeting on Tuesday, but we made it quite clear that if tolling were to occur, we would be looking at it from the point of view of tolling a single lane, like a high occupancy vehicle lane, and that the money would go into improving the infrastructure. So that is the position that this Board took on Tuesday, and I see no reason why we wouldn't go forward with that. With respect to the $5 billion coming out of the state, it's pretty well allocated as to where it's going to go. We were not thrilled with the allocation, but it still was better than nothing from Clackamas County's point of view. At least some of the planning will be done for the I-205 corridor. So I just wanted to bring you that update. This Board is taking a pretty strong position, and will articulate that to Metro and whoever else wants to listen.
Yep. And I'll just, the other part about this is, I, it's important to recognize that we've got to have a public process about this, and ODOT will be doing that. It's not a decision that the Board of County Commissioners makes, any Board of County Commissioners. It's really a decision that the state is going to make. And I think the operative word is, and Ken did highlight that, if we're going to have tolling. And I think that's really a question, because one of the options that can be studied is basically a no-build, where option one is, we do nothing. And so of the eight scenarios, which I'll have more details about that when ODOT rolls out its public plan. So, anything else? They'll move us to our Board hearing, so Administrator Krupp?
Okay, so this first item for the morning is Board consideration of a Board Order adopting a previously denied comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change application. And we have Mr. Nate Boederman here from the Office of the County Council to talk with you about it.
Good morning Commissioners. Excuse me. As Administrator Krupp mentioned, the item this morning here is for purposes of adopting findings in an order denying a comprehensive plan request, as well as accompanying zone change request affecting property just off of Interstate 205 on the northwest corner of southwest Stafford Road. Specifically, the applicant's request was to change the comprehensive plan from rural to rural commercial, and to change the zoning from RRFF5, which is our rural residential farm forest zone, to rural commercial. The Planning Commission initially held a public hearing on this matter on October 9th, 2017, and voted five to one to recommend that the Board approve the application. Then this Board heard the matter on November 1st, 2017, and voted four oh in favor of denying the application. As you'll probably recall, the dispositive issue in the case was the applicability of the urban reserve designation to the property. And state law and our own comprehensive plan prohibit the county from adding any new uses to the area, as long as those uses were not allowed at the time that the urban reserve designation was placed on the property. And that's exactly what the result of the application would have been if you would have approved it. But again, the Board voted four oh to deny the application, which was staff's recommendation, which brings us to where we are today, which is staff's recommendation that you adopt the order implementing your prior oral vote to deny the application four oh. So the findings have been incorporated in your staff packet, certainly staff's recommendation that you implement that Board Order. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
No questions? Okay. So I'll ask for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Board Order adopted findings which support a previously denied comprehensive plan amendment and zone change application, as previously heard at the November 1st, 2017 land use hearing.
Okay. Is there a second?
Go ahead. I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded for the motion to approve the Board Order adopting findings which support a previously denied comprehensive plan amendment and zone change application as previously heard at November 1st, 2017 land use hearing, in which I was absent, so I will be abstaining because I was not part of that dialogue. So it's been called on. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make two comments. One is, I always think it's wise for us to err on the side of caution when our attorneys have given us very specific advice with respect to the urban reserves question. My understanding from what they have told us is that you don't make changes once the designation is made as to the reserves as they now are. And the second issue, as far as I'm concerned, is that we made an agreement with four other agencies, Metro and three cities, with the concurrence of the community, that suggested that these, that changes would not occur until such time as the community had its voice heard in discussions with the three cities as planning goes forward in that area. I think that to change that would fly in the face of the good faith negotiations and conclusions that came from those negotiations. And I'm not, I would not be willing to abdicate or abrogate that good faith. So I just wanted that for the record, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? I agree with your summary there, Commissioner Humberson. I think it's appropriate, and had I been here, I probably would have been in lockstep with the Board on this one. So, call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? One abstained, and myself. So the motion carries three, zero, one. Brings us to public hearings. Administrator Krupp?
Yes, we have two public hearings this morning. The first is to consider a final Board Order for a boundary change proposal, number CL-17-017, proposed withdrawal from Clackamas County Service District Number One. And we have Mr. Chris Story, as well as Ken Martin, our boundary change consultant here, to give you a report and recommendation.
Good morning Commissioners. This is the second time you have seen this particular property. This was first brought before you, right before Thanksgiving, and we had a public hearing on the question of whether territory should be withdrawn from CCSD Number One. And again, I will note, you're hearing this as the boundary commission and not as a governing body of CCSD Number One, for the purpose of a property to be served more efficiently by Oak Lodge. And we held the hearing, we did not hear any testimony in opposition, and you adopted an order that preliminarily approved that withdrawal. But under the withdrawal statute, we then had to set a second hearing and allow for opportunity of remonstrance, if there were any citizens that wanted to demand a vote on that, or register their objections. And I am happy to report, to my knowledge, and then I'll ask Mr. Ken Martin the same, we have not received any. Mr. Martin?
Nothing. The property is actually vacant, so there are no registered voters there. Could actually take advantage of that.
I'm sorry. Would you speak into the microphone? I didn't catch all of that.
I said, "The property is vacant, so there are actually no registered voters living on the property who could actually invoke that remonstrance provision."
Thank you. And yet, here we are. Mr. Martin is a little under the weather, so I'll try to do a bit more of the talking than usual for him. But what a trooper to show up, and thank you for that effort. So this final adoption will withdraw the territory from CCSD One. You will subsequently see a petition for annexation of that territory into the Oak Lodge entity, where it would be served for sewer and service water purposes.
Okay. Do the Commissioners have any clarifying questions, comments? Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing effect, ask if anyone wishes to speak. See none? I'll close the public hearing and ask for motion.
I move we approve the Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal Number CL-17-017, proposed withdrawal from Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal Number CL-17-017, proposed withdrawal from Clackamas County Service District One. Any other discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, so the next public hearing for the morning is to consider a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget item greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018. We have our Budget Manager, Diane Padilla, here to talk with you about this item.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm here today to ask you to approve changes of 10% or more to the various funds as requested by departments in keeping with legally accurate countywide budget. For the most part today, this is about truing up beginning balances. This is money, the beginning balances, money carried forward to the new fiscal year, and specifically, money that was available on July 1st, 2017, when the new fiscal year started. Now that we have the books for 2016, '17 closed, we know exactly what those fund balances are. But what's currently in the budget is what the departments estimated those balances would be, when they had to do that in the spring of 2016, as the 16, '17, sorry, the 17, '18 budget was being prepared, requested, and subsequently adopted. So we are now recognizing those differences, and also differences in other funding sources, and either increasing or reducing the budget as needed to make it more current and legally accurate. These being larger budget changes, the required notice has been published in the Clackamas Review Oregon City News on December 6th. Now for the list, and it's a big one. First, the General Fund, not allocated to organizational unit, is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting it in payments to local governments to better reflect actual costs expected, and adjusting contingency and reserves accordingly. This particular item is far and away the largest change we're making, and we're adding $17,914,630 to the General Fund beginning balance. And almost all of this has to do with the GO bonds that the county issued debt to help the county and other local governments update their emergency communication systems. And we had expected last fiscal year that more local governments would buy their radios and come forward to request their reimbursements, and assume those reimbursements would be made. It was a very slow start. They're requesting reimbursements now, but all of that money that we thought would be spent last year, and therefore didn't budget this year, is still on the books. So we are declaring that we have that extra money, and we're requesting to have it added to the appropriations, so we have the permission to spend to send those governments the money that we didn't send them last year. Also within the General Fund, the Clerk has a record storage fee program that goes on from year to year, and they're recognizing that they have in that program $25,863 more than expected, and asking to add it to their budget. And they would budget that in reserves. Also in the General Fund, the Public and Government Affairs Department is recognizing $271,958, much of that coming from Business and Community Services, which is providing for the county's share of operating funds to the Willamette Falls Lock State Commission. And then going on to the other funds within the county. The County School Fund is recognizing fund balance and budgeting for special payments, which would be, in essence, transferred to the county ESD in the amount of $64,303. The Public Safety Local Option Levy is recognizing fiscal year 16, '17 ending fund balance of $516,672, and budgeting an inter-fund transfer to the Sheriff's Fund. We are closing out this fund, the separate levy fund, because it's not needed as a separate fund, and incorporating it in the Sheriff's Operating Fund, and this just moves the remaining balance to that fund. The Law Library Fund is recognizing fund balance of $64,907 and appropriating contingency. The Parks Fund is recognizing $399,824 and budgeting for program costs and reserves for future capital needs. The Code Enforcement Resource Conservation and Solid Waste and Septic and On-Site Wastewater Program Fund is recognizing $777,221 in additional fund balance and appropriating it in contingency, and also adjusting budget to reflect actual cost today. The Property Services Fund, Property Resources Fund, is recognizing fund balance and other financing sources, and budgeting for program costs totaling $540,418. The Justice Court is recognizing additional fund balance, budgeting an inter-fund transfer to the General Fund, and realigning personnel costs, eliminating a position. The increase here is $909,177. The Countywide Transportation SDC Fund is recognizing $242,865 in fund balance and appropriating it in contingency. The Public Land Corner Preservation Fund is recognizing fund balance and appropriating in contingency as well. This amount is $187,655. The Happy Valley Clackamas Joint Transportation Fund is recognizing fund balance and budgeting for special payments in contingency totaling $599,531. The Behavioral Health Fund is recognizing actual fund balance and prior year revenue, and also adjusting a wide variety of federal and state program grant revenues, and budgeting for program costs and contingency. This total is $5,645,388. The Dog Services Fund is recognizing additional fund balance of $279,936, and budgeting to add a full-time veterinarian and a full-time animal control officer, and also increasing contingency. The Employer Contribution Reserve Fund is recognizing fund balance and appropriating it in contingency in the amount of $564. This is the prize for the lowest change. The Safety Net Local Projects Fund is recognizing prior year revenue and lower-than-anticipated fund balance, and adjusting special payments downward by $76,470. The Transit Room Tax Fund is recognizing $197,560 in fund balance, and increasing its transfer to the Tourism Fund. The DTD Capital Projects Fund is recognizing additional fund balance and appropriating it in contingency in the amount of $2874,021. The Telecommunications Fund is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting for higher personnel costs and capital equipment replacement and upgrade costs totaling $628,259. The Technology Services Fund is recognizing additional fund balance from carryover projects and budgeting for completion of those projects this year, and equipment replacement costs of $2142,608. We're getting close. The Records Management Fund is recognizing additional fund balance and appropriating it in contingency of $71,208. The Risk Management Claims Fund is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting for claim expense and contingency of $924,806. Here, the claims were lower than expected last year, which is wonderful news, and it helps us add to a much-needed contingency balance. And finally, the Damascus Successor Private Purpose Trust Fund is recognizing fund balance and budgeting for program costs in the amount of $1,096,917. And the total of all these changes would be an increase in the county budget of $36,299,821. And with that, I would request your approval of these changes.
Okay, do the Commissioners have any clarifying questions? Fortunately, seeing none. I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone has any questions of the presenter. Okay? Commissioners speak? None? Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and a budget reduction for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Any other discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have a brief comment?
Yes.
I wanted to thank Ms. Padilla for coming to the office and being very patient with me, and explaining in plain English what some of the terms are in accounting ease. I don't speak accounting, and I appreciate your patience with me in explaining that, so thank you very much.
It was my pleasure, and I'm still looking for another word to...
Besides recognizing?
For recognize. Declare, maybe? I'm working on it.
But again, thank you for your help. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay. With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
And that brings us to the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, we have, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc., for rent, mortgage assistance for eviction prevention, and approval of Amendment Two to the Revenue Agreement with Family Care, Inc., for partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers for a group provider agreement for calendar year 2018. Under our Finance Department, approval of a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and from the Sheriff's Office, approval to apply for a grant application to benefit a Safe Place Family Justice Center. Under our Business and Community Services, approval of the Ready-to-Read Grant with the State of Oregon for the Clackamas County Oak Lodge Library, and approval of a resolution for the designation of the Clackamas Soil and Water Conservation District as weed entity. Under our Enhanced Law Enforcement District, approval of a resolution for an Enhanced Law Enforcement District supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And under our Library Service District, approval of a resolution for the Library Service District for supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Great. Do any questions, any Commissioners want to remove or pull any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none? I'll ask for a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Consent agenda's approved. Thank you. And now it's time for our County Administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just a couple of items. First, I wanted to share some good news about our Housing Authority for Clackamas County. They recently completed our first year of a security deposit loan program with support of a $30,000 grant from the Meyer Memorial Trust that serves as loan insurance. The Housing Authority was able to loan about $14,000 to $20,000... The housing authority was able to loan about fourteen thousand dollars to twenty different families and have zero defaults in the first year of this program. And the money, what it's used for is to help stabilize housing for many families, and it has a role in preventing homelessness. The program is self-sustaining and it's budget-neutral, but it helps the participants in the program improve their credit scores, which helps them in, you know, future financial endeavors. And I just wanted to give a word of thanks to the Meyer Memorial Trust for the grant, and also to Community Lending Works, which is the financial institution that the housing authority collaborated with on the project. Good, good work. The other item I wanted to share with you has to do with our Water Environment Services Department. As you know, we are putting together a new advisory committee. The board took action to approve the new membership of the advisory committee, I believe, last week. And they were able to meet informally for the first time just, well, earlier today. It was really just an informal gathering to get together at the Tri-City facility and get a chance to get acquainted. There's no formal agenda, but to learn a little bit more about Wes prior to its first official meeting, which will occur in January of this coming year. The sixteen-member committee is tasked with providing input and making recommendations on surface water and wastewater issues. And it's both a very diverse and representative committee of the service areas that Water Environment Services provides services to. We have a rather broad business community and neighborhood base that we serve throughout the area. I think it was somewhere around a hundred and sixty-five citizens reside within the service area that we provide services to. So, it's a good effort to get started. Looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you. So, that brings us to Commissioner Communication, and first up this morning is Commissioner Hubbardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. I continue to work on the CLT project and ISP projects, which I still find to have great opportunity for us as we go forward. And the biggest thing is really enjoying spending time attending various and sundry community planning organizations' meetings and getting feedback from, from folks in our, in our various communities, particularly in our rural communities. That said, I am prepared to talk about our dog today. And this is Roy. He's a well-aged boy at ten years old, a gentleman he is. Maybe you have a nice fireplace you could scoot his bed next to where he can nap and relax. Slow strolls around the block would be wonderful, but his days of running marathons are in the past. Dogs who will respect the fact that he's an older guy are fine by him, and they may even get a little playful. Roy would prefer to live with children who are nine years or older, just because he's a little more fragile than his younger days. Come in and meet Roy today. He is waiting patiently. For more information about Roy and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And thank you.
Great. If anyone in the audience or at home is hearing a little bit of noise in the background, apparently we have some construction going on behind us on the other side of the wall. Next up is Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. I was with my husband last night having dinner, and surprisingly enough, we were talking about how wonderful it was to be together having dinner, and oh my goodness, if there were an earthquake and I was in Oregon City and you were here, what would it be like to try to get back together, given that our bridges would be expected to not be operational? And we actually were thinking about that and mapping through what we would do, and then we stopped before the food arrived and looked on our Facebook pages to find out that there was a 4.0 earthquake in Malala. And so, I just bring that up as just a public service announcement at Clackamas County through our disaster management. We have excellent resources on what to do in an earthquake. I was just once again perusing our website. We have a lot of information, some basic information that's good to review of what to do if you're in an earthquake, indoors, outdoors, how to prepare emergency kits, and what we need to do to be prepared. So, I just bring that up. I didn't feel the earthquake in Lake Oswego. I don't know if any of you felt it where you were, but it was at 5:24 yesterday, Malala 4.0 earthquake.
That's right. Brings us to Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, and just to add a little bit to that, I remember the spring break quake, and I thought my neighbor was spraying his field and the plane was crashing into our house because it was like there was a, you know, it was in Canby at the farm and the whole house shook. It was a little bit of a larger quake. At the time, I worked at Mount Angel Abbey Library, and they had significant damage because of water pipes breaking. And it is the same fault line that had the quake yesterday, which is the same fault line that happened back in, I want to say nineteen ninety-two?
Ninety-three.
Oh, ninety-three, okay. Long time ago. Anyway, in any case, I think most of us attended the Association of Oregon Counties on Monday. I am working with our revenue committee to make sure we have a sustainable budget as that organization moves into the future, and we are starting to get ready for the February special session, in particular, looking at and having conversations about a document recording fee that may supply, supply additional dollars for housing. You know, the organization's going to look at it. They haven't come to a conclusion as to whether they're going to support it or not. If they choose to remain neutral, obviously, other counties that want to support it can move forward and do so. The other thing this morning, I had an opportunity to go to the Beaver Creek Employment Area Blue Ribbon Committee, and as many folks know, the, we have additional employment lands in the Beaver Creek area of Oregon City, and as well as construction on the Clackamas Community College campus for a new manufacturing center. And so, we were discussing how all that is going to work and fit together, what kind of businesses we want, what kind of marketing that we want to do. And the county, our economic development folks are involved in that process, as am I. So, that was kind of a fun economic development piece to do. So, with that, I'm going to go to arts and culture activities in the county. Lakewood Theater Company presents the best Christmas pageant ever. The herdmans were absolutely the worst kids in history of the world. They lied and stole and smoked cigars, even the girls, and talked rough and hit little kids and talked back to their teachers. So, it surprised just about everybody when they decided to take part in the town's Christmas pageant. Thursdays, December fourteenth and twenty-first, 7:30 p.m. Fridays, December fifteenth and twenty-second, 7:30. Saturdays, December sixteen, sixteenth and twenty-three, 2:00 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. Sunday, December seventeenth, 2:00 and 7:30. Tuesday and Wednesday, December nineteenth and twenty, 7:30 p.m. at the Lakewood Center for the Arts, Lake Oswego. I wish my grandchildren were here. I'd take them to that. Rain Spark Gallery, pop-up gallery of former Holiday Gallery artists. In their seventh year, the artists of the former, former Holiday Gallery have moved to a large new space in downtown Lake Oswego for a special pop-up gallery, including live music, book signings, wine tastings, and their traditional benefit for the West Woman's shelters. Through December twenty-third, Mondays, Saturdays, 11 to 7 p.m. Sundays, 11 to 5. Receptions every Thursday, 5 to 7, held at the Rain Spark Gallery downtown Lake Oswego. For any more information about any arts event, go to clackamasartsalliance.org.
Thank you. I was driving in my car when the earthquake struck, apparently, and I heard on the newscasters announcing that they just experienced an earthquake, so that's where I was. Can't, it's hard to feel in a car, unless it's a big one, by the way.
Where were you, driving?
Was on my way to a meeting.
Just in Clackamas.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, no, not in Malala, I'm at McLaughlin Boulevard and headed towards Oregon City, coming up the hill, back up the hill.
So, I guess people here felt it?
Yeah, in the building. I heard they did, yeah.
My son felt it in Wes Lynn.
Okay.
He did.
I didn't feel it.
I definitely felt the nineteen ninety-three Mount Angel earthquake, and that was a loud one. Been in a lot of earthquakes in my life, but that was, I could hear that one coming before I felt it. And I thought it was a train at first because of the rumble.
That's what it sounded like, yeah.
And then when I felt it, you know, it was pretty significant. So, it was really noisy. I mean, I live in an old house, so it, it rattled, it rattled the house pretty good. Had a little bit of damage at my, at both of my business locations at the time. One was in an area had a little bit more liquefaction factor than the other one, and it was, it was clear that that was a contributor because I had very little damage at one, one location and quite a bit of product that fell off the shelves and, and, but, yeah, it was still a small one. Was it five point four, I believe? Five point five? Yeah. Well, and that's a great segue into what I wanted to talk about, which is 205 and tolling, because 205 is considered probably the biggest transportation seismic project needed in the state. And mainly because they feel in the region, it's the only bridge that'll stand up, that crosses the Willamette River and will be able to move eastbound, westbound traffic and connect the two halves of the state together. So, it's imperative that the state address that from a seismic standpoint in the case of a bad Cascadia event, if it should be as bad as it's being predicted. And so, we've known that for a while, and we know that's really important. We were hoping our legislature this year and House Bill 2017 would have included funding for 205, and they're supposed to report back in February, ODOT is, with some more accurate numbers, but it's very unclear as to how or if any funding will surface February, March, or April. And yet, this tolling committee, its work, its recommendation will be, is due to be presented to the Oregon Transportation Commission in June. And so, last week, I missed the dialogue. I was actually attending the tolling committee when you all were meeting, and I was a little bit, you know, concerned about the letter that was submitted suggesting that we toll a system in which, in my opinion, is in certain areas dramatically undersized or insufficient. And I think that it'd be one thing to toll a piece of infrastructure that is adequately maintained and adequately sized, and, and that's a different dialogue, but that's not the case in a lot of areas of the region. But to toll something that is probably decades behind in capacity and is, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to a lot of people. And everywhere I go in groups, I'm asking people, I'm bringing this up, if people want to see if, again, that'd be qualifying word, if there is a toll, would people want those monies to go towards improving some of those bottlenecks and some of those restrictions and getting the adequate capacity and right-sizing our system versus just having those monies being collected for the sake of collecting them to discourage people from driving at peak hour, and most people at peak hour are going to work. And, and they need to be there on time. And our system should really be able to deliver that. Our, certainly, their gas taxes and all the other taxes they pay and vehicle registration fees are, should be going towards a system that is being maintained. And, you know, we can have the argument as what the right amount of, of funding is to make that happen and how we get there, but it's, it's, nonetheless, it's a responsibility really of our, in this case, the state, to, to bring our system up to capacity, and especially in the event of a large Cascadia event. It's terribly important. When it comes back to tolling, though, I was watching a news article, and I encourage anyone, just go online and just type, type in NBC Nightly News and look at the session on Tuesday evening, the Tuesday evening nightly news, and they were speaking to an article that I had read recently about, I think it's Interstate 66, I believe. It could be Highway or Highway 66. And I believe it's in DC, where they have variable-priced tolling. That's really what the article's about, is that a lot of metro regions around the country are adopting this congestion-valued kind of pricing to discourage people from driving at certain times. And the, and apparently, at one point on this highway, the toll had reached a forty-dollar level for a very short run of Highway 66. And when I had read the article, the news article in print a couple days earlier, it was unclear that anyone had really even paid the toll. It was not clear, but apparently NBC Nightly News, a couple days later, had cited that twenty-four people had been, received that charge, apparently paid or at least received the charge for twenty, for forty dollars for that period of time. And I don't know, you know, let's just say that's the extreme, and let's just say for sake of argument, it's one-third of that. To go one way on one stretch, how many people who are barely being able to pay their rent can afford to pay ten or twelve dollars additional a day or fi, we don't know what the toll's going to be, but these are really valid questions. At the meeting, I was, after the meeting was over last Thursday morning, I was speaking to the gentleman for the city of Portland who was representing, Mr. Saltzman, the city of Portland, and they're going through, and people may have read that, they're looking and doing their own study for tolling, to possibly look at tolling local roads so they don't have diversion problems. And we already, we already have that dialogue about Willamette Street and 65th and other areas where we have a lot of diversion already occurring. But it struck me, I did ask him, I go, I would really appreciate passing on that information as to who the consultant is, what the scope of work is, but it really begs the question, should we, Clackamas County, engage in either a study, a like study for diversion, should that happen, and will that be part of ODOT's outreach? Because there won't be public meetings on this, but I'm not so sure that it'll be as deep of analysis, and that's probably what prompted the city of Portland to do their own. So, Tuesday under issues, I hope to really bring this up, is should we do our own study or should we form our own committee of key people to really talk about this and help shape our, our, our understanding of, of how we gather our position on this? But if we don't understand the full consequences of tolling and diversion, then we probably should, because the last thing we want to do is have trucks and cars racing to get somewhere, cutting through neighborhoods where these are just residential neighborhoods, and that's already occurring right now. And do we want to see that be exacerbated? I don't, I don't think we do. So, I'll be bringing up that, up under issues on Tuesday and see what we can talk about there and explore that a little bit further. And with that, and see no other further business, I want to wish everyone happy holidays, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.